Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, October 5th, 2023. Clerk, if you call the role, please.
Counselor Kent?
Here.
Counselor Genetino?
Here.
Counselor Putty's excuse tonight. Counselor LaCastro?
Here.
Mayor Quell?
Here. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it sustains us, one nation, undaunted and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He remains standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. City clerk is off for the night, but we report today of this county. Public announcement?
There is one, yes. On Tuesday, October 10th at 7:00 PM, there will be a Historic Resource Review Board meeting in the council chambers in the City Hall Building at 24 South Street.
We have one proclamation, clerk. Do you read it to the record?
Yep. Whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at greatest risk from home, from fire. And whereas, home fires killed more than 2,800 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 338,000 home fires. And whereas, cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, and fire departments responded to more than 166,400 annually between 2016 and 2020. And whereas, two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas, more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight, fight the fire themselves. And whereas, children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas, Auburn, New York residents should turn pot handles toward the back of the stove, always keep a lid nearby when cooking, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around the stove, oven, and other things that could get hot. Watch what they heat and set a timer to remind them that they are cooking. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas, Auburn, New York first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Auburn, New York residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now, therefore, I, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, New York, do hereby proclaim October 8th to the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge all of the people of Auburn to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2023, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Auburn, New York Fire and Emergency Services.
Thank you. Was this this evening? We have Chief Fredso. Chief, may we be to hold it?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Thank you for this proclamation. It has become an annual event, but it is significant and it is important. It helps highlight and emphasize the need for fire safety in our community. The Auburn Fire Department has a very robust fire prevention program. It started in earnest this week in our schools. It will continue through the month of October and into the month of November in pretty much a non-stop fashion. However, our fire prevention programs don't stop there. They go year-round. They reach not only to our school-age students, we reach out to our college students, our senior citizens, our businesses, and our civic groups, both by going on-site and bringing those groups into the fire station to help spread the word about fire safety and improve the overall community well-being. So this year, we finally got back to 100% normal after COVID, so we are now back in schools. We are now incorporating a 911 dispatcher again with us during our events so that the children can actually hear from a 911 dispatcher and the questions that are going to be asked should they need to report an emergency. And we are also bringing the ambulance service with us to heighten the students' knowledge of what that service brings and to hopefully dispel some of the fear that comes with being put in the back of an ambulance when you're injured or sick. So again, thank you very much for recognizing fire prevention and the efforts of the Auburn Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief. Next, hope to be heard.
At this time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep your remarks to three minutes or less, and please observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. This time, is there anyone desired to be heard? Mr. Latimer, please.
Mayor, Council. Last night, Mr. Genetino and City Manager and I were...
Mr. Latimer, we all know you, but we need your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm Tim Latimer. Live at 63 South Street. And Jenny was at, at the Chamber of Commerce meeting last night. I happened to be sitting with a couple of businesses that had indicated that they had some public work done in front of their buildings, but they weren't properly notified. One was Cameron's when they, when we did Grand Ave, and then Hilton Gardens. I guess they did some paving in the middle of the day, and they had a lot of different commitments to use the hotel, and they couldn't do that. So proper notification would be helpful, I think, with some of the local businesses. Thank you.
Is there anyone else desired to be heard? Very well. Full of the meeting minutes. Did force company not available?
Yep.
So now, your City Manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Few updates. Last week, on Wednesday, there was a public meeting related to a future project to refresh the Wall Street playground. Approximately 35 members of the neighborhood attended that meeting. They were able to view several conceptual designs and features that might be incorporated into a rebuild of that facility, and they were able to score each design and feature as well as contribute other suggestions that might not have been included. And this neighborhood input will be used to develop next steps in the design process. Earlier this week, staff hosted a meeting with the Kewa County Social Services and our local homeless outreach coordinator to discuss various topics related to our homeless population and those squatting in vacant and condemned homes. County Social Services works directly with these individuals and families and is in close communication with both our police department and code enforcement departments. The primary focus of this particular meeting, because we do have these on a regular basis, but in particular, this meeting was related to the change in seasons that will be coming up and the cold weather and how that will change how Social Services deals with that particular population. Last week, a few of us gave a rather lengthy presentation on our housing situation, including challenges and various methods we employ to maintain and improve our neighborhoods. We didn't give a whole lot of time to discussing the police department's recent GIVE initiative, and we frequently see a connection between nuisance complaints and suspected or known criminal activity in particular addresses. So I asked Chief Slaton if he would say a few words tonight to give us a little bit of an update on the GIVE initiative.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Council. I was in front of you before talking about the GIVE initiative, which is the Gun Elimination, Gun Involved Violence Elimination Program that we were involved with, with the New York State Police, Kewa County Sheriff's Department, parole, probation, and so on average, we have about 12 people that go out on these initiatives. We've been out at about 12 different times now. It's been very successful. We had a void list from five to eight people on that list, and what I'll call them is the chronic offenders in the community that are involved in violent crimes. So we're aware who they are. We, we gave each of them letters, which were Violent Offender Identification Directives, stating that we are going to be following up with them. We're going to be following up in the neighborhoods, family members, whether it's due to drugs, any type of violence. So with that, we did, we've already, since its inception, which started in August of this year, two of them have been arrested of crimes that happened, and one of them is going to be incarcerated now in state prison. So I think it's been very successful. On its early stages, we're only going to get better at it. The officers are going to train with the, the units from the state police in Rochester who deal with this specifically on their own. We just constantly want to train our officers to get better in what to look for. Some of the other things in that, 2021, 2022, we had one of the largest drug seizures in the city of Auburn in the last 20 years. With that, we took a lot of fentanyl off the streets, cocaine, methamphetamines, and guns. So with that being said, we're out there actively looking for offenders, violence, and drugs. And some of that, we have to report to the New York State Incident Base Reporting, which we call the IBR reporting. It's a little different than our Calls for Service. To explain the difference is, the IBR reporting is actual factual stats that we send into the state compared to calls for service would be anybody calling in a complaint, and the nature of that can change when the officer gets on scene. So with that being said, total violent crime, which includes murders, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault, is down significantly over the past few years. And property crime, which is your burglary, larceny, motor vehicle thefts, is down about 50% on each compared to the last 10, 15 years. So I think we're in the right direction. We're doing everything that we can with this to touch base on some traffic, which affect our quality of life issues, speeding, motor vehicle crashes, stuff like that. This, from October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023, we put officers out on the street for a total of 331 hours, and during that time, they wrote 479 traffic tickets, which is quite a few. And that's, that's not to ticket people to get into somebody's pocket. That's to change of behavior. That's, that's to get them to slow down, understand passing school buses, wearing seatbelts, stuff like that. And lastly, you know, just reiterating on the survey that we did years ago, that 94% of residents responded to that survey. They feel that they feel safe, are very safe in their home at night, with 77% of the responders feel safe, they're very safe at night alone out in the streets in the neighborhoods. And with that same survey, overall feel, feeling relative to the service of APD to the community, 76 responded with an excellent to good rating of the police officers with the Auburn Police Department, and only 4% had a poor rating. So just wanted to keep you updated. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. No questions, just Chief. I just want to commend you and your command staff for going after this grant and bringing this funding here to the City of Auburn to undertake this initiative. I actually ran into a 20- to 25-year veteran of New York State Police last week, and he wanted me to pass that along as well. That you, your command staff, and the men and women out on patrol undertaking this program is making a difference. You know, being between Rochester and Syracuse has benefits, but there's also negatives. One of the negatives is the crime of those big cities is constantly knocking at the door. And this gentleman said that, you know, this is a clear wake-up call to those individuals that we're not going to stand for that here, and they're not welcome here. So thank you for everything you all are doing to contribute to the quality of life here in Auburn.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And with that being said, that grant is not a match grant. That was funded totally by the state, so it didn't cost the city anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks. Okay, so carrying on, today, several city staff participated in a meeting conducted by Camoin Associates. Camoin is familiar with our city staff. They've done several projects for us. Right now, they've been commissioned by the Central New York Regional Economic Development Group to develop a strategic visioning and plans for Central New York to better respond to both commercial and residential development. We were joined by CETA staff and board members, our counterparts from Kewa County Planning, staff from Kewa County Tourism, and a few local business owners on that initial meeting, and there'll be follow-up meetings as they develop their plans. And lastly, this morning, Christina Selvick, our Director of Capital Projects and Grants, and Jenny Haynes, our Director of Planning and Economic Development, had another productive meeting with Elstom representatives and their Realtor. These meetings have been occurring every two weeks as the parties all work together through the first phase of returning the Bombardier property to productive use. And as a, just a general reminder for folks, throughout the years, Bombardier has remained current honest taxes, remained in some sort of communication, although we certainly appreciate the new owner. Elstom has really stepped up their game and is working with us to return that property to productive use. But the property is, still remains privately owned and is controlled privately, and city staff and CETA staff provide assistance within the scopes of our individual authorities as there's interest in those properties. Continue to provide that support. That's all I have. Very good.
Thank you. Reports from council, is anybody?
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, Counselor Kent, myself, City Manager, attended the Annual Chamber of Commerce Dinner. I want to commend Amy Fuller and her staff for another great event. And they recognized 14 businesses in Auburn and Kewa County that had been in business in a range of years, one being five years, up to 200 years, and that was New Hope Mills. It was nice to have everybody back in the room together, everybody in the business community, overwhelming sense of positivity of how things are going in Auburn and Kewa County, and the support that they get from the chamber and the city and the county as a whole. So I just want to commend that staff. There was also an article in the paper today, actually a letter from Karen Cool, Director of County Tourism, and it gave the annual report for tourism in Kewa County, and it's an important economic driver in our area. And I just want to read some excerpts of that, if that's agreeable with everyone. Statistics come from the Oxford Economic Report. They do an annual survey. "The travel sector is an integral, integral part of the New York economy. Visitors generate significant economic benefits to households, businesses, and government alike, and represent a critical driver of the state's future. In 2022, tourism-supported jobs accounted for 7.2% of all jobs in the state. Visitors in New York spent $79 billion across a range of sectors in 2022. This reflects a 23% growth from 2021. As a whole, the Finger Lakes region experienced a 24% growth over 2021 and 122% growth over the pre-COVID-19, 2019 economic impact. In 2022, visitors to Kewa County spent over $144 million and brought in almost $9 million to each, each to both local and state taxes. This is a savings of $571 per household in property taxes in Kewa County." Obviously, the economic impact is important, but I think what it shows is people are interested in Central New York and the Finger Lakes. They view it as a place of opportunity, a place to come. And as we start to see the micro facility in, in North Syracuse come to fruition, I think that it shows that this is a good place to live and things are starting to roll in the right direction. Thank you.
So earlier this week, Counselor Genetino, Chief Slaton, Corporation Counsel Garland, and I attended an event at Auburn City Court to recognize the 20th anniversary of Auburn's Drug and Alcohol Treatment Court. And there were many speakers there from really across the state. We were introduced to and heard comments by the current City Court Judge, Honorable David Thurston. And Judge McEwen, who retired about five years ago, gave a very compelling speech about the beginning of the Drug and Alcohol Treatment Court. Ours was the fourth in New York State to open 20 years ago. And Judge McEwen talked about how frustrating it was to have people come up before him, and he couldn't offer them a viable alternative. He felt like they would be coming back. And he got together with their coordinator, Carol Calvin, and brought community agencies and departments together to develop a non-traditional approach to criminal court proceedings. And to date, they are proud to say they've really helped turn the path for about 400 people over those 20 years. And a couple of them gave their stories on their personal journeys to the, to the group that had joined them to celebrate the 20th. And they look forward to continued success. They recognize a lot of their community partners, agencies, and departments. And we know so many are working within the city on the same mission, but it was just important to recognize that program, which is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Castro, you have it?
I'll sit, Mayor.
Reserve your time.
I'm going to hold, I'll hold on this for a minute.
Thank you. Seeker Resolution Number 4 of 2023, Determining a Type 2 Action Under Seeker for Lead Service Line Inventory. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genetino, seconded by Counselor LaCastro.
Seeker Resolution Number 4 of 2023 by Counselor Genetino, seconded by Counselor LaCastro. Whereas, the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, the city, is the sponsor of a lead service line inventory project that intends to identify and locate all the unknown lead service lines in the city and use this information to create a lead service line inventory and purchase a new vehicle, the project. And whereas, the city desires to comply with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, the Seeker Act, and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Department of Environmental Conservation of the State of New York, being 6 NYCRR Part 617, as amended the regulations with respect to the project. And whereas, Section 617.5 of the regulations establishes a list of Type 2 actions that have been determined not to have a significant impact on the environment and are not subject to further review. And whereas, Section 617.5C-18 states information collection, including basic data collection and research, water quality and pollution studies, traffic counts, engineering studies, surveys, subsurface investigations, and soil studies, that do not commit the agency to undertake, fund, or approve any Type 1 or unlisted action. In Section 617.5C-25, purchase or sale of furnishings, equipment, or supplies, including surplus government property, other than the following, land, radioactive material, pesticides, herbicides, or other hazardous materials. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, that 1, the proposed action corresponds with the parameters identified in Section 617.5C-18 and Section 617.5C-25 of the regulations. And 2, the lead service line inventory constitutes a Type 2 action under 6 NYCRR Section 617.5, and no further action under the Seeker Act and the regulations is required. And 3, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Have anything in particular? If there's any questions, do we have staff available? No discussion. Counselor, please call the role.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quell?
Aye.
Carrie?
Thank you. Land Sale Resolution Number 95 of 2023, authorizing the sale of real property, known as a portion of Number 18 North Division Street. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Kent, seconded by Counselor Castro.
Land Sale Resolution Number 95 of 2023 by Counselor Kent, seconded by Counselor LaCastro. Whereas, on May 18th, 2023, the City of Auburn acquired title to the real property commonly known as 18 North Division Street, the property by tax foreclosure. And whereas, the property consists of a pole barn structure, as well as property that runs along both sides of the Owasco River, and is located in a commercial area. And whereas, the city desires to retain ownership of the portion of the property that runs along both sides of the Owasco River, and only sell the pole barn structure. And whereas, the proposed purchaser, Richard S. Banus, desires to purchase the pole barn structure to utilize for storage. And whereas, a purchase offer and sale contract has been proposed by Richard S. Banus, which is attached hereto and incorporated herein for the purchase of the property at a price of $66,010. And whereas, the property is a surplus parcel and not needed for city purposes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Auburn does hereby approve the purchase of offer and sale contract from Richard S. Banus, which is incorporated herein for the sale of the portion of 18 North Division Street for the sum of $66,010, subject to the terms and conditions set forth therein, and also subject to the following. 1, that the city provide only a quitclaim deed to the buyers at closing. 2, that the buyers be responsible for payment of all title closing costs necessary to close the transaction. Be it further resolved that Mayor is authorized to sign the purchase offer and sale contract together with any and all documents in order to finalize the closing of the sale, and directs staff to record the sale proceeds into revenue account A99.2660, sale of real property.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Diger, anything?
No, just as a reminder, after years of utilizing a purely auction-type format to dispose of surplus properties and tax-foreclosed properties, we have taken the approach and enlisted the services of the real estate agency to help us promote and, and sell these properties. They offer us advice on things to do to enhance the value of the properties pre-sale, and it seems to be working out well for us. I believe our, the revenues we generate or we recover from these sales exceeds what we were doing through the auction process, and we're able to take a more careful look at the future owners of the, each of the properties to make sure that they're going into the hands of folks who are going to rehabilitate these properties in most cases. So overall, it seems as though it's been successful. So this is just one of three or four we have on this evening.
Thank you. Discussion, councilors? Please call the role.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quell?
Aye.
Carrie?
Land Sale Resolution Number 96 of 2023, authorizing sale of real property, known as 138 South Street. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genetino, seconded by Counselor Kent.
Land Sale Resolution Number 96 of 2023 by Counselor Genetino, seconded by Counselor Kent. Whereas, on June 2nd, 2023, the City of Auburn acquired title to the real property commonly known as 138 South Street, the property by tax foreclosure. And whereas, the property consists of a single-family home, which is located in a residential neighborhood. And whereas, on September 13th, 2023, the city listed the property for sale with the real estate agency as its real estate broker. And whereas, Josephine and Richard Stankis have proposed a cash, cash purchase offer and sale contract with, which is attached hereto and incorporated herein for the purchase of the property at a purchase price of $75,000. And whereas, Mr. and Mrs. Stankis have represented that they intend to renovate and restore the property in order to live there as their primary... the property in order to live there as their primary residence. And whereas the property is a surplus parcel and not needed for city purposes. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn that the purchase offer and sale contract from Josephine and Richard Stankis, which is attached hereto and incorporated herein for the sale of 138 South Street for the sum of $75,000, be approved, subject to the terms and conditions set forth therein, and also subject to the following: 1) the city provide only a quick claim deed to the buyer at closing; 2) the buyer be responsible for all title, survey, and closing costs necessary to close the transaction; 3) that the buyer be required to obtain any and all permits necessary to renovate the property within a reasonable timeframe from the date of closing, and that all renovations and/or construction at the property be completed within a mutually agreed-upon reasonable timeframe from the date of closing; and 4) that the deed transferred to the buyer shall include a revisionary clause to provide that if the buyer fails to satisfy the conditions relating to the renovation of the property within the reasonable timeframe agreed upon, then title and ownership of the property shall automatically and immediately revert back to the city. And be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized to sign the purchase offer and sale contract together with any and all documents in order to finalize the closing of the sale, and direct staff to record the sale proceeds into revenue account A99.2660, sale of real property.
Thank you. Mr. Diker, anything to add?
No, this particular piece of property is historic in nature, so that certainly makes us take a really close look at whether or not a potential purchaser has the means and experience to tackle such a project, and follow that to be true in this particular agreement.
Counselor, discussion. Counselor, please.
Just a quick comment, Mayor. Piggybacking off what the city manager just said, members of the Stankis family are here tonight, and I just want to acknowledge them for, once again, investing in the South Street Historic District. This is a unique property, as the manager said, and it will help maintain the character of that historic district.
Absolutely. They've done a fantastic job with everything that they presently own. I'm sure this will be a plus for our community and for their families. Wish them well. No further discussion. Correct me if I call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Castro?
Aye.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie?
Thank you. Land Sale Resolution Number 97 of 2023, authorizing the sale of real property known as 2B Chav. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Castro, seconded by Counselor Genetino?
Land Sale Resolution Number 97 of 2023 by Counselor Castro, seconded by Counselor Genetino. Whereas on May 18th, 2023, the City of Auburn acquired title to the real property commonly known as 2B Chav, the property by tax foreclosure. And whereas the property consists of a single-family home, which is located in a residential neighborhood. And whereas on September 13th, 2023, the city listed the property for sale with the real estate agency as its real estate broker. And whereas Barry Leader has proposed a cash purchase offer and sale contract, which is attached hereto and incorporated herein for the purchase of the property at a purchase price of $55,000. And whereas Mr. Leader has represented that he intends to renovate and restore the property in order to resell it. And whereas the property is a surplus parcel and not needed for city purposes. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn that the purchase offer and sale contract from Barry Leader, which is attached hereto and incorporated herein for the sale of 2B Chav for the sum of $55,000, be approved, subject to the terms and conditions set forth therein, and also subject to the following: 1) that the city provide only a quick claim deed to the buyer at closing; 2) that the buyer be responsible for all title, survey, and closing costs necessary to close the transaction; 3) that the buyer be required to obtain any and all permits necessary to renovate the property within 30 days from the date of closing, and that all renovations and/or construction at the property be completed within one year from the date of closing; and 4) that the deed transferred to the buyer shall include a revisionary clause to provide that if the buyer fails to satisfy the conditions relating to the renovation of the property within one year of the closing, then title and ownership of the property shall be automatically and immediately reverted back to the city, and be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized to sign the purchase offer and sale contract together with any and all documents in order to finalize the closing of the sale, and direct staff to record the sale proceeds into revenue account A99.2660, sale of real property.
Very good. Thank you.
Staff, please. Nothing, Mayor, aside from Mr. Leader has some previous positive history in these types of projects, and staff supports the sale. Very good.
Thank you. Counselor, name? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie?
Thank you. It's great to get some of these properties back on the tax rolls and productive. Just adds to our community. Thank you for your hard work, all the staff. No table items or presentations? Other business from the council? Nothing? All that to be heard? Please. Dr. Stankis, please. If we could start out with your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Stankis, 130 South Street. My wife, Diane, and my oldest daughter, Amanda, and myself were here tonight to personally thank you, Mayor, Council, and the city for accepting our proposal for purchase of 138 South Street. We appreciate the history of Auburn. We've been here for 35 years, and we plan on being here as long as God willing. And the support of the city, I think, has been exemplary. I'd also like to take a moment and acknowledge Jenny, who's here tonight, who, of course, has been with the city for many, many years. We appreciate her support on Historical Resource Review Board, and the knowledge she brings and the dedication she, again, takes in making Auburn history's hometown. I'd also like to acknowledge tonight the passing of Gino Alvarici. For those of us who have had the honor and pleasure of being personal friends with Gino, he, as most of you know, was a unique individual. And our condolences go out to his family, and again, God bless Gino. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Good evening. Timothy Donovan, 23 Chadel Place. Members of council, Mayor Quill, members of the diocese, guests. I'm a member of the Auburn Rotary Club, and I want to make an announcement. I know, Mayor, you're aware of this. Forgive my voice, I'm a little raspy, but this coming Tuesday, October 10th, at the Auburn Rotary Club, Mayor Quill is our special guest for the program and the agenda. And I know, Mayor, you've had a long tenure. We're all looking forward to your program, but I'm here tonight to invite members of the council, members of the diocese, Mr. Garland there, to be my guest and attend the Rotary Meeting, that Mayor Quill is being honored and recognized by the Auburn Rotary Club. We meet Tuesdays, 12 noon, at Auburn Public Theater at the Stage Right. We have a lunch, and, but I just humbly invite you, and Mayor, congratulations on a long tenure, your service to the city of Auburn. And we're glad you're going to be there, and I hope they see other members here at our Rotary Meeting Tuesday. Please come. Thank you.
All my coworkers probably want to be there, don't want to be there, but they know Mike has a good memory, so it goes, it goes. Other people have good memories, too. It works both ways, trust me. Thank you. Is there anyone else who's going to be heard? There you go. Do we request for executive session?
We do not.
No, nothing from staff? No request for executive session. Not entertained motion, adjourned. Counselor Kent, seconded by Counselor Genetino?
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Adjourned.